I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Coachee?
Nisa?
Here.
Janudis?
Here.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Here.
Brooks?
Spinks?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the...oh yeah. We need a motion to excuse Heather from...by Mizek, second by Saunders. Call roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2018.
Corrections? Seeing none, have motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2018. Any changes to that? Any corrections? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Mizek, second by Saunders. Call roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the Ward 1 and 4 meeting.
Any changes or corrections to that on March 26? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
We have under old business, we have ordinance number 9571-18. And we need to make an amendment.
Yes, can we get a motion to amend that ordinance to state to enter a contract with Jay Buick GMC at a price of $27,367.21. Is there a motion?
Saunders, second by Mizek. Call roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And the motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Janudis. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Saunders. Mike, do you want to take that?
Yes, thanks Mayor. Again, as the legislation reads, we are...this is money that was originally budgeted for these new vehicles, 2018 half-ton four-by-four pickup truck moving for the water department. And this is going to replace a 1996 Ford that frame and body are rotted very, very badly in a vehicle that has roughly 109,200 miles on it.
Testimony to our mechanics down there to keep it running. Call roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9572-18.
So the motion to amend so-called all the city manager to enter to contract with Jay Buick GMC in the amount of $27,367.21.
Motion for amendment? Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2018.
Call the roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janudis. And Mike?
Thank you Mayor. This is another truck that was budgeted for in this year's budget. 2018 three-quarter ton pickup truck. And again, this is going to replace a 2,005 with 107,000 miles, of which the utility bill...or the utility bed on that truck has already been passed and repaired multiple times. We recommend this purchase.
And also, if you're wondering why we're amending to change the trucks that are on here, it's because we're going with our rule that within 10%, we will take a local business over an outside business. And that's why we're going to assert loyalty, especially to our automobile and to our local residences, local businesses, whenever we can do the within the 10% difference, we will go with getting a local business. So that's why we're doing this. Call the roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9573-18. Need another amendment?
Yes sir. Can we get a motion to amend that ordinance for calling a contract with Valley Ford Truck for the purchase of one 2018 F-450 Ford dump truck at a price of $64,223.55?
And removing the...
Moving the...
Yes sir. From that. Motion by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll?
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Mizek. Call the roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Janudis, second by Fluharty. Same situation?
Yes, this is a piece of equipment, this dump truck with a plow for the service department. It's actually replacing a vehicle that is rotted to the condition that it has just become unsafe for continued use, especially during the winter time. This quote to Valley Ford, it is their state bid price for this vehicle. And again, it was budgeted for this year.
Call the roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Our city manager is going to be running out. Ordinance number 9574-18.
Amending section 91503 of our ordinances entitled Containers, Newspapers, and Trimmings, and ordinance number 727-45 entitled Removal Requirements and Declaring an Emergency. And I wish I put that on...I have 15.10, I should say, entitled Removal Requirements.
And we wish to put that on second reading. Motion by Mizek, second by Saunders. And this is concerning waste containers in the downtown historic district. Call the roll please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9577-18. Authorizing the city of Bedford to accept the titles, parcels, or land obtained through the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency. Again, it's our wish to put this on second reading. Motion by Mizek, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Nisa?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you Mayor. A couple things, quick announcements. I did want to mention that our annual first of two shred days is going to be coming up in May, on May 19. That is going to be from 9:00 to 12:00. You can bring your items to be shredded right here in the municipal parking lot. Also, a reminder for all the residents in Wards 3 and 5, although anybody's welcome to attend, we do have our second ward meeting, which will be this coming Monday, 7 o'clock in Council Chambers. Wanted to compliment the service department, as Bedford was once again in Tree City, USA, as well as our residents that are on our tree board. Well done. April is finally here. Tomorrow's going to be nice, although later in the week and cold weather's back. We are starting the chipper service. If you have debris that needs to get picked up, contact our service department. We'll get you on that list. They will be making the rounds throughout town. As well as our street sweeper's going to be out, starting in April as well. So we'll be getting around, trying to clean this up, clean the streets up. Hopefully, it doesn't snow anymore as we get into spring. I had mentioned in the fall, and I sent something over to Council last week...or last week's memo, we had notified ODAT officials last fall and again, beginning of the year regarding some concerns we had with the Northfield Road Bridge. That bridge, there's some areas of the fencing that are in significant need of repair, as well as the locks. There's some concrete that's in need of repair. You can see some rebar in there. We've taken, I think Clint took upwards to 100 and some photos. Those were all officially submitted in the fall. We were told that they would be out this year to look at it and come up with a plan for repair. We didn't hear anything, so we reached out again in the beginning of February. We did get a response, and the...their plan is that, guess what? It's on us. It's normal maintenance. That's obviously a huge concern for us. I mean, this is, again, it's a substantial, substantial cost. It's nothing that we can do internally, replacing all of that fence, all of that concrete work. We're already maintaining the walkways and things like that, we used to. But to go ahead and make repairs like that are just, you know, we're not going to settle right now on that answer. We're going to take a tough stance on that. I think they need to come out and at least come up with a better solution. So I wanted to mention it here. I know we've talked about it. They told us they were going to look to address that in '18, and the way they address it is an email saying, "Go ahead and fix it." So we're going to pursue them and pursue them pretty aggressively. So hopefully, I can get some news in the coming weeks on that. And I also want to bring up the Dominion project. Dominion was, you know, we met with them. They had plans to open cut Broadway and make that connection last week in order to connect all of the open lines along Washington. They had opened cut a section, starting the one evening, and their one trench, it was going smoothly. It was dry. When they got to the second area that they had to open cut, it was flowing with water. We don't believe it was our water. We believe it was Cleveland Main's water, which we've been telling them that for some time. Cleveland has been out. They were out through the end of last week. They did identify a small section of a leak near that area that had since stopped, but the water hasn't stopped. They are moving all the way up, and this afternoon, they were in front of the AT&T building in downtown Bedford. I don't...we don't know if that's where the water's coming from, but there's water coming somewhere. So that's why there's that delay in making that connection. They need to isolate that, and obviously, it's a safety issue. It's one of those things we talked about earlier. We open up stuff like that, and there's a lot of infrastructure underneath the ground that's very, very old. Sometimes you run into things like this. So we don't believe it's ours, but we're going to, you know, we are out. We were out, actually, we had a staff member that was out Saturday. And again, today, we're sounding our system. We do it every year. But there was a substantial amount of water early on, which makes us all to believe, and the contract to that, a large portion of it was Cleveland water. And they've been out. Cleveland's been great. They've responded. They know it's an issue on Broadway. So I will keep everyone up to speed as far as that project goes, and hopefully, we can get that connected sooner than later. I will let Frank make an announcement with tax as far as hours of operation, and we're going to be open on some Saturdays for collections, because I'm sure he's going to touch on collections. End of report.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Gamp, oh gee. I really have no report. I want to thank everybody for coming.
No trash, no gale.
Everybody had a happy Easter yesterday. Couple items, I'll address that issue first. We will be open for the tax, start from 9:00 at 1:00 p.m. On the 7th and the 14th, for your convenience, we will have our staff there. Hopefully, it'll be 4:00 to 5:00, plus working with the public this year and getting things done. On my with that, something a little different in the report, been monitoring the tax increase to see how we're doing. Just to give you an idea, January, which wasn't affected by it because we were carrying over from December, we saw an increase of tax of only 3%. That course was expected because the withholding wasn't there. However, for the month of January, we see that individuals are actually even for the month. We were $20,000 less than last year in our net profits, and up 147,000 in business withholding. So overall, we were 127,000 ahead. We need to be at 150,000 a month. That'll give you the gauge for where we should be. In the month of March, we were down 32,000 for individuals, down 2,000 in net profit. This is for the prior year, and up 167,000 on withholdings. That's because some of the businesses missed the vote in February and paid their bills in March. So we are on the withholding side, getting where we need to be, but not on individuals. But of course, I see that changing once we get to the month of April. Again, this is a reminder then, everybody pay your estimates throughout the year. That is what they're for, so that at the end of the year, we don't have those delinquencies and so forth that we have to go after people. So the estimates need to be paid throughout the year, especially if you're going to hope $200 or more throughout the year. Overall, we're up 14% of the year. We ought to be at 21.5%. So we're a little bit down lagging right now as we go. But I just thought I'd bring that to everybody's attention. So far, we're seeing a good increase in the business withholding. Individuals are down, but of course, everybody's taxed through in April. We'll see that increase instantly then. And for net profits, they'll either pay in April, ask for extensions, which most of them do, and we won't see those cuts until October. So that's what most of the businesses do, to give you an idea how things operate. So that's the end of my report. Again, we'll be open from 9:01 on those two Saturdays for your convenience. And if we haven't seen you yet, we hope to see you soon.
Thank you. This is Mizek.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see a nice group of people here again tonight, which is great. First off, we had, myself and councilperson Spinks, we started season off already for the first ward meeting, and we had a nice group, a lot of interesting questions and concerns. Our meeting went very well. We were actually done before 9, which is great, because I think our people of our two wards really have faith in your council people, that we were there for them, and we do the right thing when they need help, have help. Next one coming up is on April 9, which is a week from tonight, and it'll be Ward 3 and 5. And that'll be our new councilman, Victor, Mr. Fluharty, and also our other councilman, council lady, which will be head of roads. So that should be a very interesting evening. So if you missed ours, you can come to that one or the last one. Secondly, I have a message, a question to the city manager. Did you talk to anyone at the school about the parking, you know, the parking on Fort Glendale School as far as tying up the roads in the 3 o'clock hour?
We shared those concerns with them, and they were going to look at, try and resolve. I don't have an immediate resolution, but we did bring that up.
I still have had a couple inquiries, and people aren't too happy. And also, this is a reminder to everybody. When Kimball comes, you can bring, put your trash on your lawn, on the driveway, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, night before, your trash day of collection. But that doesn't mean you have to bring your can back in a week later. You have 24 hours after the trash has been collected to remove those cans to fill up for the following week. I've had a few people from Palmetto area that just quite don't understand that situation. I'm not just reminding my own ward, I mean, reminding everybody. When the trash is collected, you don't bring it in when it's done, because you're working or... You're going to wait till the next morning. That's fine. But don't leave the cans out, because sometimes they do blow over, and they are not raccoon-proof, believe me. I bombed it out the other night. I looked in there, and I go, "Ah." And I shut the lid and put a lock on top of it, because I wasn't going to let it out with my can. Too bad it get out on its own though. And they'll fall over, you get kids that have the animals in there, or the litter goes on the street. The other question to Mr. Malice, the diversion program. I know that on Edgewood, they have been, you know, they had, they wanted to have the road cleaned up over there. And now we have to go on Trinity Road before the dip, going towards Lee Road South. There's quite a bit of litter down there, too. And how often do the diversion kids attend to our streets?
We actually worked to create a list. They're not out every Saturday, but it all depends on who's coming through the court system. So one, there are kids, and Penny in our police department, she works to organize that. She has a list of locations that wouldn't be cleaned up or other projects that we work with them. So when there is a group of children or kids that come through the court, we'll send them out to these locations. But I'll make sure that they're all used to.
Mr. Janudis?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty?
The biggest thing that's happened in my area the last few weeks is basically a lot of basements being flooded with this weather, and I've been getting a few calls for that. And I want to also thank our water department, because they really came out and helped out and responded very fast and got a couple people's basements taken care of. So just hang in there. I know, like you said, it's a big problem. Everybody has some kind of water problem, either in the backyard or somewhere. But it's an old town with old basements, and we've been all dealing with this probably for a long time, and always will. But the water department did respond, and I want to congratulate them for helping me out and getting these people back up running without worrying about your basement. That's about it. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes. Hope everybody had a happy Easter yesterday. The weather may have been nippy, but at least the sun was up most of the day. Getting back to Dominion project, I hope they realize that's a 30-inch water main. That blows, we're going to have what they did downtown several times a couple years ago, where it takes out half the street. So, but, and they...
Yeah.
Are they aware of the fact that it's been leaking at Union for over two years? So that water's coming from somewhere, and it stops and it goes, and it stops and it goes. So I hope it's not at the bottom of the 30-inch, because if that's the case, they'll never find it until it does blow. But back to the Dominion project, I got several complaints from... Granted, there aren't that many residents in that area, but them working at night, making all that noise. One family has three little kids. They couldn't get any sleep. It still is difficulty. I did tell them that, you know, it is primarily a commercial area, and being a state highway, you almost have to do it at night anyway, because, let's face it, traffic from 271 is still piling through that area. But on the same note, they really ought to have a flagman up where Union comes in by the dry cleaner. Union still thinks it can pull out, even though the lane, the curb lane's been closed now for several days, during the day even, not just at night. So all of Broadway's coming up, where we use that barricade, those three little pylons. And somebody's going to crack into each other over there, because too many people have gotten used to Union to be able to pull straight out on Broadway, be figuring that that's their lane, which normally it would be, but when there detoured traffic into that lane, it is causing some near misses.
We'll follow up with them. They did have three different flaggers. They did have one at the very top, up near, almost at the Pompeys. They had one down by Taylor, and they did have one at the Union location during, while they were working. I don't know if you're referring to when they're not working, like when there's, you know, cold lanes. We'll follow up.
I went through there twice today while they were working with the curb lane closed, and there wasn't a flagger to be found. Two of whom were sitting in the truck from AWP. You couldn't get out of Taylor. It was, it was a mess. So their guys that are supposed to be working as flagmen are lagging a little bit behind now. Maybe they were on break, but if they're on break, it's too dangerous of an area, especially during the day, that if they take a break, they should put somebody else up there. Somebody is going to get hit in that area. It's just too congested and too much construction going on. In any case, if you look into that, that would be a good thing. And that also, do you know exactly how long it's going to be for them to finish digging through that area? Because like I said, there are, even though there's only a few residents there, they're not exactly happy campers right now, because they're up all night long.
Well, they haven't been working in the evenings, because we got to get the water. So other than those first couple nights, they haven't been working in the evenings. Because we got to, I mean, it's just, it's not safe until we get that water leak finished. So, you know, I would imagine maybe one or two more nights, once the water leak is corrected. But until we know where that leak is starting from.
The residents were a little upset, because they weren't notified that they were going to be working out there. They should have notified the few homes that are over there, just so that they are aware of the fact that there is going to be noise, or give them air plugs, one or the other. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that concern up. In that fact, construction sites have to be done, and sometimes they have to be done at inconvenient times. So, have we decided which streets we are going to do yet this year as far as resurfacing? Because several areas are starting to peel, like Ennis Hill, the asphalt's actually peeling off of the road through that area.
You know, I mean, unfortunately, I think we all know how the weather was in March. It wasn't conducive for us to go street by street and do that assessment. Once that weather breaks for good, which we hope is in the next few weeks, our service department, our engineering department, or goes the whole city, we have a gauge of the streets, we believe, based on the age, based on needed repairs. But we're going to actually do a street by street assessment, because I'm sure some of that'll change. Our hope is to have that done sometime in April. But we haven't been able to do it, I mean, we know how the weather was. Two weeks ago, we had four inches of snow, so...
Yeah, well, we might have that on Friday for a homeowner or two. I'll put my bid in for Nordham again, and Elm Street, both are old concrete streets and had bad joint repairs before, and they, they're just crumbling. So both of those are in serious need of some type of action. Thank you.
This month is National Autism Awareness Month. I have my blue, blue is the color for that and the puzzle pieces. And also, this Sunday, coming up, April 8, the Historical Society will be hosting their open house. Also, on that same day, the Bedford Garden Club is going to be unveiling their second phase of the Art Fence Project. That will be at 2:30, and the open house is from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And if you get a chance, please stop by. Got a lot of really neat stuff going on at the Historical Society this weekend, the Sunday, the 8th. And so that's the good stuff. Mike? The weather broke a little bit this weekend, so the speeding is going on again like crazy on Grand Boulevard. The stop signs mean nothing to these people, the one that's in front of my home, and the one in front of Helen Briggs's house. I don't know if this is a cut through, what's going on. You know, the cars go by so fast, you can't get a license plate number, but an incident is going to happen.
but an incident is going to happen again like it did two years ago. I witnessed a couple this weekend that when someone does stop for the stop sign, the person that's behind them goes around them. Yeah, it's getting ridiculous. I don't know. I've been complaining about this as long as I've lived here. I know the little flashing signs, they help some when they put out the sign that tells you how fast you're going. Well, people are really slowed down when they see that. So maybe we put one up permanently or what? Because every time, you know, they put it up, oh, I hear, oh, there's not a problem, there's not a problem. Well, there is a problem. So I don't know what the solution to this, but I don't wanna wait till either a kid gets hit with the summer coming up. We have little kids that are in the neighborhood that do have autism that run across the street quite a bit. We have kids that don't have autism that run across the street quite a bit. So I don't wanna take a chance on a child or, we have seniors that walk through dogs. And at our ward meeting, we wore down one new callous ward meeting, one of the residents. And I did take a walk down there on Grand by the Creek. And I mean, right now, because of the winter was, you know, so nasty and stuff, but it is pretty atrocious. I mean, it's starting to get sort of creepy. Did determine, I think, that that does belong to the city, so if we could get something done about that, that would be appreciated. End of report.
Thank you. I only have one little item. I guess a number of people, especially on the Facebook page, I don't even know what it is, but they were going crazy because the flag on the square was at half-staff. For once, they said. I looked, it's not at half-staff. It was just ten feet from the top. Well, I found out the reason it's ten feet from the top is because it's, the tree's so big now, it's blowing into the trees and it's ripping the flag. So Billy, who takes care of that down there, just lowered the flag a little bit and what an uproar it caused. Flag is down ten feet. So we'll either look at trying to trim the trees or lower the flag pole, one or the other. But it was not at half-staff, so, just to bring that up because it seemed to be a hot topic for some people. And with that, let's get on with business. Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-two dash eighteen.
This is related to the, one of the amendments we passed previously. So authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with J. Buick to purchase one twenty-eighteen four-by-four three-quarter ton pickup truck at a price of thirty thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents.
I have a motion for suspension. Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizak. John, you explain that. Call the roll, please. You got more to add to that?
The only thing I was gonna add and I didn't bring up before, thank you, I'm sorry. That all of the J. Buick, all of the prices, and obviously we are going local, but they are the GM fleet basis prices that we are getting. So I did want to mention that. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah. Anytime. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-three dash eighteen.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with AC Lawn Care and Landscaping being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Mizak. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Yes, we did bid this. We do it every two years. It's a two-year contract. And this is for cutting and maintenance of various city-owned property that we're unable to maintain or have the staffing to do, as well as for all properties that we have to cut and then subsequently charge. All of, you know, the medians that we cut, the various right-of-ways that are cut, the vacant homes, the homes that we have to go to after we send notices because people aren't maintaining their properties. We contract this out. We did get two different bids, AC Lawn Care and Landscaping, as I mentioned. They had bid the previous year. They were also, once again, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. They were very reliable, previous two years, and we recommend awarding it to them once again.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-four dash eighteen.
Pending chapter one-seventy-eight of the Code of Fire ordinances of the City of Bedford to enact a new section, seven, one-seventy-eight twenty-seven entitled Net Profits Opted to correspond with the opt-in provisions of chapter seven eighteen of the Ohio Advice Code, repealing certain ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Saunders, second by Mizak.
So basically, this is a result of us, a lawsuit that is pending down, well, it was decided by the trial court that we were required to follow the state law in regards to income tax collection. We're presently involved with the loss of a number of communities, appealing that decision, but so far our appeal has been unsuccessful. So we're required to avoid anybody challenging the constitutionality of our ordinances to adopt these provisions or otherwise we're gonna lose revenue.
In regards to that, this is the net profits processing. And as you know, I don't have a problem with them doing the processing of those that are many jurisdictions. What I have a problem is the fees that they charge and take from our community. And in doing so, this is kind of like their way of just rubbing it in that they want the appeal. And we have to abide by passing their legislation and adding it to our ordinances that allows them to collect on our taxes. Otherwise, we would be in a different situation. We wouldn't have the tax ability. So at this point, as council approved that this evening, that we will continue the efforts toward the appeals in regards to this matter.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-five dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the city and firefighters local sixteen eighty-three International Association of Firefighters, adopting the terms of a contract and order him to effect and declaring an emergency.
And a motion for suspension. Janutis, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizak. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to the legislation that was on the last meeting with the police contract, this is in essence the same thing. Fired Union, we engaged beginning of the year, had very healthy discussions. Ultimately, I think we came to a very agreement that is very fair for both sides. I have nothing but great things to say about their negotiating team. It was done in a very gentleman manner. We addressed things such as healthcare provisions, as I've previously indicated, as far as the prescription changes, there's some smoking clauses in there, similar to police going ahead and having, adjusting longevity and some other items have been done. It's in essence the very same thing. And I think it's a fair deal and it's a good deal for both parties. And we recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Oh, let me think about it.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-six dash eighteen.
Pending ordinance number ninety-four seventy-three dash seventeen regarding chapter thirteen eleven of our Code of Fire ordinances so as to enact a new section thirteen eleven twenty-nine J entitled Certificate of Rental License and Inspection and declaring an emergency.
We would like to put this on first reading. Motion for such by Saunders, second by Mizak. Just a bit, yeah, just touch on it a bit because.
Yeah, I had brought this up at last week's board meeting and I'll bring it up again. We actually attended a meeting with officials from Cuyahoga County, as well as representatives from all the interranged suburbs. And it's centered around property tax delinquencies. Countywide, there's about thirty to thirty-five thousand properties that are delinquent on their property taxes. It's a major issue. Actually, there's many people that have said that this was coming. The first issue was the tax, or I'm sorry, the first issue was the mortgage crisis. Obviously, that is kind of remediated and slowly getting out of that, but the next wave is gonna be the property tax issue. There's just a lot of people that are delinquent. And the county has set out on a goal to address four to five thousand of those delinquencies on an annual basis. And their goal is to tackle at least four thousand this year. So, you know, if you receive notice, don't ignore that notice. They're there to help. There's options. You have options. You might not have the money to deal with it today, but contact them and they'll work with you. That's their first and foremost. They wanna try to give people, so it's just not ignored and pushed to the side because it's only going to increase. However, what we are seeing, and this is countywide, is there's a lot of individuals that unfortunately, over the years, they just, they know how to work that system. And they may avoid those property taxes because they have a rental property and they're collecting their rent, but put me on a payment plan. And if they go delinquent, they can do a payment plan again and again and again and again. And, you know, that's, they're gonna look at addressing that. But what we're going to do and what this piece of legislation does is, if you have a rental property and your intention is to use it for rental income, you need to be current on your property taxes. And there's been a couple of communities that have done a similar piece of legislation and they have seen those rental units that generate income for investors. The delinquency in property tax actually decreased on those units, up to eighty percent in some of the communities that started this. And I think it's a, it's a good piece of legislation, something that we would, obviously, we proposed it. Like to talk about it some more, but obviously, other communities are seeing some success in dealing with those delinquencies. I know that, you know, we've had a couple of people have asked me, well, how come, you know, Joe's house down the street, I used to live there, you know, someone's renting it out, they owe twenty-five thousand, they tack taxes. That's a perfect example why. You know, someone that might snatch up a good property, we got good housing stock, might have been able to get a foreclosure at a low amount and they can play that game on the property taxes while they're collecting their substantial rent. And, you know, people are collecting eight, nine thousand dollars a month in rent, you know, but they know how to, they know how to play the game. And our intention is, listen, it's okay to do that, you know, it's fine to be an investor, but you need to take care of your taxes first, so.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-seven dash eighteen.
An ordinance declaring the property and structure located at four zero one West Glendale, permanent parcel number eight, one, two, twenty-three, zero, zero, six, a nuisance and therefore condemning the property, ordering the action and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for suspension by Mizak, second by Saunders? Call the roll.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Spinks, second by Janutis.
Yes, this is an unoccupied vacant home. It's been in bad shape for years. Actually, it has really taken a turn for the worse of recent. It's in structural failure. We sent an immediate notice to the property owners. Unfortunately, the gentleman has since passed away and the female lives on the west side. We sent a notice to them to address this immediately or the city will take action to do so. It is, again, it's in deplorable condition. If it gets to the point where we need to do something about it, we are looking to include this property in our application to the county for demolition funds. We already have earmarked a property that is in poor condition at Columbus Road that is vacant, that we've since acquired for the purpose of demolishing and a couple other parcels. If we need to get to the point where we have to address it, which ninety-nine percent sure we're gonna have to address it, we'd like to include that in that grant application.
Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Motion, sure, can I get a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation of March twenty, twenty eighteen regarding Third Sun Solar LLC, representing owner Dick Marcelino of Motor Carzak or Onova and Armed Performance Group LLC located at one eight one two three Rockside Road, to permit them to install a rooftop mount for a four-hundred-and-one panel solar electrical energy system.
Do I have a motion for acceptance that yes, you agree with the planning commission and no, you disagree? I have a motion by Janutis, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Next motion?
We get a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation of March twentieth regarding conceptual approval of Mazda of Bedford Way Inc. proposing to build an automobile dealership for new and used sales and service located at Meadowbrook Track Number Three at Rockside Road and Northfield Road.
And could I have a motion for acceptance by Mizak, second by Saunders? This is the first step in getting the new dealership up there at Rockside and Northville and starting the, repleting all that property and make it useful again. I think it's a good one. Again, yes, you agree with the planning to grant it and no, if you disagree. Call the roll, please.
Coachee?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
The next motion?
And last is a motion to accept the Board of Zoning Appeals' recommendation of March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen regarding Byron Green at six-six-zero Columbus Road, which was approved by the planning commission and council to build a thirty-by-forty pole barn garage per section nineteen thirteen oh seven and is now seeking relief from section nineteen twenty-seven of four of fire ordinances of the city for a height regulation variance.
I have a motion for acceptance by Fluharty, second by Janutis. Any comment on this? Again, yes, you agree with the planning commission to approve it, although is, I've agreed with the planning commission decision.
It's the BZ's request.
BZ, I'm sorry, I said wrong. That's why, that's why we have a clerk here that knows to write the right stuff. Sorry. Call the roll?
Coachee?
No.
Mizak?
No.
Janutis?
Yes.
Flourin?
No.
Saunders?
No.
Spinks?
No.
All right, comes to that portion of the meeting, the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, come forward, state your name, address, and your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Coachee. Appreciate you and your spouse and your colleagues and, I'm, I'm running pinky butts and for safety and security reasons, I choose not to give my address. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the kindness that you've displayed for my concerns since I've been in Bedford. And I wanted to congratulate you on receiving the funding from the county for community development as well as bring some other concerns to you this evening. And I want to let Councilman Saunders know that I have honored my end of our agreement from when I spoke with you on last, the last time. And I pray that everyone had a safe and a blessed holiday weekend. I haven't seen you all for a while, but two holidays where I celebrated also the memory of a great, great grandfather who was an Irish soldier for Saint Patrick's Baptist in my dad's family. So we have a lot in common. You're speaking of some landlord situations and I have what, this you can see, Councilman Saunders, as well as my money is in Bedford Court. And it's been there since January, well, since January. So you may want to look into that. I know people move quickly around here and they do a lot of different things. But the county also has your system mapped and it needs to be redone because it's causing some confusion in Bedford. It has District Six and District Nine mixed up. I'm going to give you this so you can look at it. And also, in resolution two thousand eighteen number forty-eight, this economic development fund place-based mixed-use loan, which I don't bring with loans, for two million dollars in one of the other jurisdictions for the church and state mixed-use project. I'd like to see Bedford get some money for their church and state mixed-use project.
We've been asking.
I'd like, and whatever I can do to help you do that, I'd be glad to do so. And I'm still in the brace for the United States House of Representatives. I want to thank you, Councilwoman Spinks, for always reaching out and speaking up for those who can't speak up for themselves. Not only children, but disabled and the autistic. That's, that's very, very important because many times, even in today, people treat people who are disabled like they did people who were lepers in the biblical days as well as women during our menstrual cycle where they couldn't even go into the temple because of the menstrual menstruation. And you don't do that and I appreciate you for that. And I have this for you, Mayor Coogee. Today, I experienced something and I don't know if you're aware you are, but the medical center has doctors in there that are on private contracts that if they commit any type of medical malpractice, city manager or the law director, they're not accountable. They don't have to answer to university hospital for that. If their behavior is not acceptable or if they give someone the wrong medication or if they decide not to give someone proper medication or medication at all or treatment, they don't have to answer to the director, Mayor Coogee, of the university hospital. And that is dollars that is not making sense for the city of Bedford. And I wanted to just keep you abreast of that. This is, this is yours.
Sorry?
Who do you want to give support assistance?
Your time's up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Sarah Gennadesbi on behalf of the Southeast Branch Library. I want to highlight a few programs upcoming this month in April in terms of our family programming. We still have our Family Story Times on Wednesday evenings at six-thirty and Saturday mornings at ten AM. We have continuing our parent-child series with Engage With Me for children in K to eight. This month, they're doing goal setting, both the places you'll go. So it's a program for parents and children. It also includes pizza. We have our weekly Friday art experiences for families. Now, what I do is I work with teens, so I'm going to go ahead and go into that a little bit. We are continuing our series with Young Innovators, which is a program in which we partner with NASA. So we have real NASA scientists that are coming this month and next month for an afternoon on a Saturday in which they do programming and robotics. We had a full session this past Saturday. We also are starting a new program, a monthly program called Volant Teens. And that's where we are going to have children, or teens, in grades five through twelve that are going to work with me on some projects for the library as well as the community. Some upcoming projects we're going to be doing is making kindness rocks to hide around town. We're going to work on the beautification of the grounds in the building, whether it's through art or flowers or gardening. So if you're in the garden club, I'd like to talk to you sometime. We're also looking at with National Pet Month coming up, making pet toys and things to give to some shelters. So those are some of the things that we're looking at as well as anyone in the community that has any ideas on how we can get our teens productive, do some stuff in the library, that'd be great. We're also continuing our monthly creative writing club in our Make and Take Maker space. Some feature programs for adults this month. They're starting a series called UFOs, called Unfinished Objects. Many times, we start quilting, knitting, embroidering, some kind of hand-mending projects. This is a time to gather with other people and hopefully get some of those done. We also have the Cleveland Memory Project in which it'll give you a workshop on how to conduct local and family history research. If you're not able to come to that, a lot of people don't know that when in the library, you have free access to ancestry dot com, which is actually pretty hefty if you pay for that membership yourself. And of course, continuing with our afternoon book discussions. Something I'll talk about probably next month, but to give you a heads up, a lot of people don't know that Cuyahoga County Public Library offers free summer camps. And this summer, the Southeast Branch will be hosting four afternoon camps. The week of June eighteenth, we'll have an alphabet in action for ages five through eight. This is hot off the press, just so you guys know. It's not published. The week of June twenty-fifth, we have a program called Savvy Scientists for ages seven to nine. The week of July ninth, a magic camp for ages eight to thirteen. And the week of July sixteenth, camp for girls ages fifteen, eighteen called Discovering Your Potential. So these are just some of the things we're doing. And we'll have more information for that available later. But that registration opens Wednesday, May ninth at nine AM. So we really want to get our residents and our branch. Now, all of the branches have programs, so sometimes, you know, if it doesn't work with your schedule, doesn't mean you can't go ten minutes down the road to Maple or Warrensville or Solon or any of those other branches. Another thing is, starting May first, we're going to kick off our Libraries Rock Summer Reading Program. So we really want to get into the schools and into the clubs and everything to encourage people to read this summer and of course, there are incentives. So I have that. And to remind you that in addition to being National Autism Awareness Month, thank you for mentioning that, it is also National Poetry Month. And so Cuyahoga County Public Library is bringing thirty days of poetry to you to encourage you to read and write on their website as well as through social media. So check that out if you get a chance. And if you need any more information, I'm here all the time, our concierge after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Coogee, may I come back up, please?
Thought we were going to let everybody else.
Okay, because I forgot, I forgot something I need to say.
That's Jose Stewart ninety-three Avalon. I just wanted to piggybank onto what Mr. Saunders said. Today at five o'clock at Taylor and Broadway was a mess. And I said to myself, oh my gosh, they need a flagman here. And he was not there. All four, you know, they didn't know what to do. If you're coming down Taylor by Barker, you can't even see around the men working. So it really was very dangerous at five o'clock this afternoon. When you were talking about streets, on Berkshire, all the kids in the high school walk on that street and it's got, you know, a hole bigger than this whole section here. And so it's not just us who walk on dogs, it's kids twice a day walking on Berkshire. It's particularly bad by the corner of Avalon and by Norton. I mean, Norton, the whole street is a mess. Mr. Saunders is right. But on Berkshire, which is almost as bad, kids actually have to walk in the street because there aren't sidewalks. And on Talbot Street, there was a house, it was the day after that big windstorm on that Thursday night. So I think that was about five or six weeks ago. These wires came down and I called, you know, the one-two-three-four number and I'm sure they sent somebody out because they're like, are they live? I said, I really don't think so. But we teach children never to touch wires. Those wires are still there. And I told Mr. Saunders about it two weeks ago. First, it was on the street, the apron of the driveway and the sidewalk. In this past five or six weeks, somebody, every time I go around the block, somebody's moved in a little bit. But we tell kids not to touch it and every day, they're at that toddler park and every day, the high school's walking down the street and those wires are still laying there. So the other day, I was walking with my husband and he looked, he goes, you know, that tree's dead. And I never even looked at the tree. So they're hanging in a dead tree and there's bark all over the sidewalk, which is dangerous under the snow. Kids riding their bikes and that's been a mess and it looks really trashy.
Is it by the toddler or do you have?
It's across the street from the toddler. It's one-ten Talbot, which Mr. Saunders said is vacant. But all that bark on the sidewalk is also a danger. And if we tell kids, don't touch wires, and then they walk by them for six weeks, they're going to be like, oh, yeah, wires aren't dangerous, I'll just touch that one. So it really is across from the park and it really looks trashy. So if somebody could clean that up since it's not getting done by the owner, that would be great. Thank you.
The owner?
Yes.
I can make a quick comment on that. The owner of that house is letting the bank take it. So unfortunately, he actually rents the house across the street. So the lines that are down are cable vision or not cable vision, whatever, spectrum now. And they don't care. So they said, if you don't like them, pull them down. So, because I actually talked. I don't, I don't expect you to. So we may actually have to have somebody go out there and just clip them off. But they're not live. But you're right, that place is trashed and the guy is letting the bank take it, so.
And I literally walk around it in the street with my two dogs every day, which isn't a very good example either, but I'm not walking over those wires.
Yeah, well, I've talked to the owner. He says his basement's a swimming pool. He can't live in that house, so he's letting the bank have it, so.
And you're wise to assume every wire is live. Always assume they're live, so. It's good for your health to assume that. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else?
Jerry Pittis nineteen Alton Street. I gave a shout out to the service department. This morning, it was a water leak at the bottom of our driveway and it was pouring out pretty well. I called and they came out immediately and took a while to fix it. I have room to get my car out tonight, so I come down here. So thank you for our service department.
Glad to hear that.
Rich Calisco, one-six-seven Best Street. I'm just going to help out for poor Vic. The rain we had, what was it, last week? And some of the houses got flooded. Neighbor, the neighbor lady, I tried to help her out and she's, I tried to explain to her. And what I think, I should have called probably to talk to Sean. But they need, they used to have a piece of paper with on what they would do as far as doing service. And you got the woman all kind of upset, or actually, her daughter got, got the woman all upset. Because Sean said they'd come snake it out and they would put the camera in there. Now, if they found out the prop, there was problem in her property, he would never come back. You know, that's something that, a little more etiquette, he would have been talking to her as far as, you know, if it's her property, she shouldn't need to address it. But I told her, I says, you still need to find out if it's really, you know, your property or the city's responsibility as far as restoring that. The water went out, so they never did snake or thing. He said, Sean said they were going to come back and TV it. Now, I'm, we used to have a sheet of paper as far as, you know, with the city, if they still do. I know, well, we used to break. Go ahead.
Yeah, he pulled that information for the house and we are actually, the camera's down right now, getting repaired. So once we get that back, they're going to go on camera.
But he should have a sheet because I guess her daughter lives in Bedford and had it happen. And when they come and TV'd her line and they found out it was on her property, then her daughter started screaming at her, don't TV the thing because they'll never come to your house. Well, you know, that's something you should never say, we'll never come to your house. You want to help the people out. And if it's their responsibility, you want to let them know. I mean, you can give them a, you know, a couple timeouts or something as if it's their problem and to address and fix it. I have another one for Calvin. I got a neighbor Calvin that's got a refrigerator in his front yard next to his house with a bungee, I mean, not a bungee, a tie strap around the door. You know, and I thought they could, you know, I seen a guy taking stuff to the scrap guy and I thought he was taking it, but obviously, it's still there. It's like one-seventy-one Best. And I hate to say something to the guy because I, you know, he's probably going to know I called and he said something because I live next door. You don't need a refrigerator out front with a scrap up there.
That's it. Thank you, Richard. Anyone else?
I meant to.
Short comment?
Yes, sir. I meant to, actually, this is actually why I came originally. I've been on the phone with FTA, Federal Transportation Administration. I've been dealing with public transportation for about fifteen years, going to board meetings and such. Not to give you more work because you have more than I already. But would you please follow up with these shelters that are in Bedford and the trash receptacles? It's horrible. Not only are they not covered, but they're not empty as they should be as well as the shelters. There are some people who actually adopted shelters at one point in time and they have walked away from that. And I wanted to let you know, I've got the NLSA for the library. I have a degree in English. One of my degree emphasis at lots of college is English, so I can't help with literacy. And some people don't even know how to read to, to vote, to read what's on the ballots. That's real serious. And I, and I have a book in the Library of Congress of poetry. So if you need some authors, I'm willing to have available.
Thank you.
That'll let you know. You all have a good night.
Anyone else? Seeing none, have motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Lou Harvey. Call the roll, please.
Coogee?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Luhordi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.